I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:33. And I do want to add on a discussion under new business, just to discuss adding WSESU-based addresses, email addresses. Any other adds to the agenda? Oh, sorry, it was a discussion of the use articles. Oh, no, it's in there, sorry, it's in there. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of December 19.
I will move. Over, you have, there's a lot of typos and a lot of errors in here.
So, I think Michael took these, and he is not in here.
Just some of the wording is a little, not terribly professional.
But I thought some things were kind of wiped out.
Yeah.
So. Can we move that?
Let's let me move that to a later.
Well, we can move it.
Our second.
It's been moved.
You, it's been moved. So I need a second, so we can have those questions. So, thank you for seconding Sue. So, shall we postpone the discussion till, in that way, if there's a fairly lengthy amount of stuff, we don't have to keep Frank and Paul here if they don't be there, if it doesn't excite them. Would that be acceptable to everyone to move it to old business?
Yes.
Budget season, it's empty. Okay. I'm recognizing groups and individual visitors that are not here. We have a couple of warrants to approve. I would entertain a motion.
We can move.
My second. To approve the warrants of 1222, 2017, in the amount of $62,486. And the warrants from 19, 2018, in the amount of $53,963.59. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Naser extensions? The ayes had. Thank you. You've been very efficient, Frank. We're good to go.
Yeah, great. Okay.
Does anybody need a copy of the budget? Let me, oh, there. Oh, it's in the.
Real set?
Yep.
Okay. Did you want me to give you a quick overview?
I love that.
Okay.
Personally. I think we could all use a little refreshing after the holidays.
So it is the same draft that I had sent up on the 19th for your meeting. So the spending and the revenue assumptions, no change. I did update the second page, which is the tax estimate with the CLA. So, CLA does affect the tax rate, the adjusted tax rate. So if you scan down to the middle of the document and you see line 32, common level of appraisal. So we went from 106.5 to 104. So what that means is that property values in, on average in 2018, properties were selling about 6% below tax assessed value. And the trend now is based on actual transactions submitted by your listers to the Department of Property Valuation Review. Properties are selling, on average, about 4% less than tax assessed value. So, if you're a seller, then that's good news. If you're paying taxes, it's not so good news, because you see, if you remember your number from the last meeting, the very bottom line was 8%. And this number is 10%. And that reflects that 2% change. It goes right to the tax rate. We're seeing a lot of volatility in our region, across our towns. The Braderboro town is almost identical to this, and they've seen the same trend. For many years, they were seeing property values sort of decline, selling for less and less, but this year, that changed a little bit, like you see here in Dumerson. Vernon amazingly different. Vernon went from 106 to 112, which means their property values are continuing to decline. So, you know, in our region, when we talk about, you know, the K-12 impact for Dumerson, also, an update for you is the BOHS proposed budget. So, the earlier draft that I had given you, we had estimated the BOHS tax rate at about $1.80. You see that on line 35A, $1.77, so that's down a little bit. And that's still a draft we're meeting tomorrow to vote on the final version of the high school budget. And just as a reminder again, Dumerson residents will pay the 69% of your tax rate of $1.98, and you'll pay 30% of the high school's tax rate of $1.77. So when we bring that down to an equalized rate, that's that line 38, okay? That's no real estate adjustment, $1.91, up, you know, 14 cents, 8%. And then when the CLA comes in, that $1.91 goes down to $1.84, because they're saying, hey, your tax assessments are too high. So here's your relief. So there's the update. And then, did you sort of summarize the spending plan for the 19th? So, I, you know, I'm glad to try to answer questions, but I guess I don't need to repeat what we did. I did have a question on the revenues, just as an update. We weren't flat out. I would have called Joe Carroll and see if she had any input. But on the first page, we have an assumption for tuition, down a lot. And I don't know if there's new news on that. That was the news, the information that I understood a month ago. So I don't know if we expect any tuition students, but unfortunately, this is reflecting a loss of two students.
Right. We have one for next year.
Okay, so that's what.
Oh, we have one for next year? About a half tuition amount for that?
No. We have one and a half next year.
Oh, okay. So that will help. I'm pretty sure about that. I mean, you know, because putting in revenue, if it doesn't material, is just like spending more money than you have.
No, this is definite.
Okay. So that's good. I would assume we could.
Is that going to be like 23, then?
We could estimate about, yeah, another $15,000 in tuition. So we can talk about that impact. The other thing that you may have talked about, maybe not, is the Medicaid sub grant you see is up 19,000. And that reflects a significant increase in the total amount that Tabby Favreau has demonstrated that she can raise through just a terrific effort at the SCU office. She's the Medicaid clerk that works on behalf of all of us. So she increased the revenues 100,000, and that's shared by all the districts. And then, I'm sure Paul has mentioned the loss of the Title II-A sub grant.
Lyle did.
Oh, Lyle did.
I asked Lyle about it.
Yeah. So that's, you know, that's another thing, that's putting pressure on the tax rate. It's as if you went out and spent $74,000 more, $75,000. So, the state support grant is the number that we don't like to see change, or increase anyways. But yet, it is what balances your budget. So your budget is 3,025 as a draft proposed. We simply subtract all of those other revenue sources, and then what's left over is the 2,852. And that's what goes to the tax man. Or if you wanted to see that on page two, the tax sheet, maybe you've already seen, you know, recognize that. But see that 2,852 is line 14. It's all your spending minus revenues that you're not asking directly through property, school property taxes. So 3 million minus 172,000 equals 2,852. The 172,000 is things like, it's all of those things. It's tuition, Medicaid, and transportation aid, and so on. So I'm sure you noticed, you are over the penalty cap in this draft. Your proposed spending in this draft, now that, I'll give you an update now that we've talked about a revenue change, but this version is 18,651. But you actually go, so that's on line 16. When we actually go to the tax tables, the state says, well, no, we're not going to start at 18,651. We're going to essentially double the amount that you're spending over 17,816, and we're going to add it. So when you go to the tax calculation, it's 19,486 is the basis.
So basically, any dollar over the threshold, we're assessed $2 for that amount over.
That's right.
So that's why that's painful and a really important number.
Major, yeah, what they call a cost containment incentive for boards.
Yeah, that's a nice marketing technique, but it's a penalty, the way I see it.
It is.
It's fine.
No doubt about it.
Are equalized pupil numbers, is that confirmed?
That was final, yes. There was two versions of the data that came out, and that was the second one.
So I guess the question we always like to ask is, in order to bring down the, to get us to that threshold, just as a way to put a, stick in the ground so that we can understand what we're dealing with in terms of if we're going to make changes on the budget, what would that require in reduced spending, given the increased revenue that we just discussed?
Yep. Okay. So the increased revenue brings us down to 18,555. We're, you know, and we're still looking at 17,816 as our target, so we're, you know, we're still well over. The way to figure that question out, if, you know, I wasn't readily available, you wanted to know, it's simply, it's that number that you're spending over the threshold, times the number of equalized students you have.
Oh, yeah.
So that's 113,000. 113,000 of either new revenue, or fewer expenditures, or a combination. 113,000 is going to get you right at 17,816.
And so that excess amount now is 737.
37, yeah.
37, times.
152.95.
152.95, okay. Just so I can follow my logic later.
Yeah.
So if we were able to reduce 113,000, what would that do? Can you tell me what that would do?
Yeah, so you would be 17,816 in spending. And, let me put that into the system, and I'll tell you what the tax rate is. You probably didn't talk about, you know, the fact that the state is starting this all off across the state with about a 3% increase in taxes. And that's based on their estimate of what's happening with revenues statewide in grand lists, in the ability to fund public education. So if we spent 17,816 per student, our tax rate would be $1.81, which is, you can see on line 29, it's nearly unchanged. It would be one penny difference, right? Right now, we're $1.80, and this would be $1.81. So, it's, that's four tenths of 1% change. But then when we go all the way down to the, what the taxpayer actually sees, it would be a 3.9% change.
Which would be?
CLA adjusted, it would be $1.729. $1,729 per 100,000 of assessed value.
Wait, that's the bottom line?
That would be all the way adjusted, yeah. So six and a half cent change, 3.9%.
So this $1.84, that's would be $1.72.
Yeah, $1.72 in line. So 1.729. And I don't know if you, you've talked much about the, you know, the capital assumption, but you do have a bit of a, you know, reserve there that you might want to revisit. Unfortunately, it's, you know, it is the place that boards usually go to reduce spending if they're in this situation, because, you know, obviously it doesn't have the staffing and employment implications. But over time, you know, eventually, you just can't defer projects.
And I included in your folders some capital projects that have been on the books for quite a while, that would free heal Mary's and steal from Michael's folder.
I have this?
Yeah. You can see how long, I mean, how long have we got proposals for that? I think the biggest thing that we need to look at for next year is the cafeteria tables, even if we do it over a three-year period of time. Although, I haven't seen that that was much of a deal, like just buying three tables at a time. Want to play that way.
Where are they on this?
You don't need to.
Oh, they're the top ones. Yeah, okay. So 25,000, or?
Well, 25,000 was the lowest, and probably the least likely to happen. 22,000, we put them in in 2004. And, you know.
Well, we have 90,000 in the budget now, correct?
We do.
So that's a big chunk of that, 113, isn't it?
Yep. Yep. We got lots of parts from when Oak Grove replaced their cafeteria tables, so it could still keep them going.
Keep them going.
Keep them going. That 90,000, though, is not, isn't it like 70,000 over the 20,000 that we already have in building? I mean, I can't say that clearly, but you've added that to a line item that we typically have 24,000 in.
Okay.
Or you just put a whole new line item in there?
No, it was a current line that we added at town meeting as a special article. And then I retained it, knowing that, you know, these projects are usually multi-year maintenance.
What page are we on? On page five. The building maintenance contracted services.
The 90,000.
Yep. So, we spent less than we had budgeted for last year. And we do have the money in the budget this year, those extra warnings to have.
The Alliance Mechanical and the paving.
And the paving. Yeah, I stopped adding the paving to the capital fund two years ago, as we dip into the driveway.
Nice.
It's fine.
Well, we're knocking some of them off.
Yes, we are.
And so the base amount that you kind of expect that we need in that line item is $24,000 without any of these additional capital planning considerations?
Yes.
Just to keep the building running, you can see the 17 budget is 38,000, you know, so.
Although the actual is 20.
Yeah.
So you put, I see what you did. Okay.
Yeah, so I just added 60 to the 38, because that's where it belongs in terms of, you know, the state codes.
So it was 60, the additional warning?
Yeah. Yeah, so the budget without that was 38, and I added the 60. And then for the 19, I knew that you would be having this discussion, so here's your, it's time to kind of, I can choose in the context of that tax rate.
So the 19, 928 is money we've spent to date? Do we have more?
That was the 12 months ending June of 2017.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And we don't know what we've spent for this year?
Yeah.
Have we dealt with any of these issues? Only, you know, just a couple hundred dollars in the cafeteria tables getting keys.
Okay.
The fire alarm, still plugging along. And the arsenic thing, we're over in terms of when we were supposed to replace it, but we're still not getting any additional arsenic parts per billion bangs on our testing, so it seems to be doing the job it's supposed to be doing.
Okay. That sounds important.
Cleaning the air handlers is just something that Mary Lynch always said we should have done, should do. And I do think that Alliance, when they were doing the work, said, you need to think about that at some point in the future. Roof repairs, that's hit or miss. And it's mostly on the, at this point now, on the flat gym roof. And any repair that you look there to fix, you inevitably poke a hole and cause other, you know, the ice, you know, builds up around the grain and just.
So, I think maybe, I'm just going to throw this out of the context, is maybe we look to try to find this money in some way, just as a general group, and then send it back to Joe Carroll for sort of what the priorities might be, and maybe try to have a short, we have to prove it on the 23rd, if it would make sense to plan a short meeting for next week, but to have a general discussion now, and then give Joe Carroll a few days to think about it, give us all a few days to think about what we're comfortable with, and then have a quick meeting. And then Frank can put some of these initial things together, so we can see a fully visual learner here, like we can see it all together and see the real impact, and be able to compare previous years. So, does that seem like a logical way to proceed, so we're not here tonight trying to micromanage a budget that really isn't what we're supposed to do anyway?
Right.
I see heads, so I'll take that as a plan. I think we also spoke with Lyle that they're, sort of in the revenue, that there was going to be some surpluses also from reserve, like there was some reserve funds that maybe were.
From the capital fund.
From the capital.
From Dumerson?
Not the capital fund. Like there was going to be some surplus from 20 Cent Now?
I don't remember that.
And that we, there was more in a balance than we needed.
I think we're probably talking about that same line item.
Yeah.
That, you know, that's the only favorable variance that I'm aware of for this current year and for next year, is you don't have a capital fund, or it's got $1,200 and it's been dormant. So, yeah, unless, you know, Joe Carroll could tell us if, you know, something has changed in our regular budget that was unexpected to the favorable side, but at this point, you know, I don't anticipate a surplus in the general fund. But we, I am, I'm looking at our year-to-date, because I see we've spent about 20,000 of that 98, so I can look up what that is in maintenance. But we haven't visited parking lot, right?
No, we haven't.
Yeah, so of course, that's to come. And were there other specific projects that?
The Alliance is going to go start chipping away at some of the.
The mechanicals, yeah.
The mechanical stuff. And looking at the work that we had, they had talked to Energy.
Efficiency.
Efficiency Vermont about kicking in a couple of thousand dollars.
Right.
Yep.
And I talked to Tim today, and he was going to, with my permission, go back to them and tap that well and see what they were able to provide. And then we're going to meet the week of the 23rd, or 4th, or 5th, and move ahead.
Okay.
Some of the work that was projected in the project is now going to be, is now needed maintenance to get the controllers up and running, which are obviously not working Although finding out, too, that even the functioning ones don't work as well with unprecedented cold weather, you know?
Yeah.
You have one heater in the hall, the hall's going to get down to 56 degrees, even if it's doing the job it's supposed to be doing. Could we do like we did last year? I mean, depending on what we end up deciding when we reconvene, but could we do like we did last year, where we present to the voters in a special article these specific expenses for, and they can see? I mean. I also was wondering, too, about if we decided that there were one or two necessary ones about, you know, doing it over time, a bond or something? Or just?
Municipal loan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that different than a bond?
Yeah, yeah.
Like the law that would just?
Yeah, if it's a three-year term, we can vote it right off the floor at town meeting. If we go more than five-year term, we have to have a separate town-wide meeting. And it has to be Australian bound format.
It does?
Yeah.
That's just a lot, yeah.
Okay. Well, I know Joe Carroll and I can do what you just asked, you know, revisit the assumptions, consider this 113,000, that if you wanted to get below the spending threshold, we can give you a recommendation on what we'd get there, with Joe Carroll's, you know, insight guidance on least impact to learning students for.
That's also sort of an attractive number, because that's what our tax rate has been around historically, 2016 and 2017. So we had the advantage of CLA and other things last year, and, but we don't have them this year. So I personally feel like that would be a really good thing to talk about doing, and then I really like Amy's idea, if we want to see how hard it is to get there, but look at maybe putting some of these capital items on a separate article.
I mean, personally, having looked at most of these items in many of my previous years on the board, I mean, I do have significant concerns about continuing to defer maintenance. You know, because if that continues, then we're going to end up with a huge problem. And, you know, a fire, for example, a fire alarm system that's non-functioning and not repairable, we can't have, you know? We can't have cafeteria tables that don't work. You know, so, and we can't have leaky roofs, you know? So.
And I guess I think perhaps we should, like, I'm sorry?
Do I?
No, yeah, you should talk before.
Okay. I was just wondering what the specific line on page five, the building maintenance C slash S?
That's what we're talking about.
Okay.
So we're trying to, because we had that $60,000, we had that $60,000 article override last year.
And that's where the money came from.
And so that's where the money came from. But now we're over the threshold, so we could do a lot of these projects if we kept an extra $60,000 in there.
Right.
But then we'd be at a tax rate that may not be what we want to present.
Okay.
So that's kind of what we're.
So that, the 90,000, is that, what is that, what, I'm sorry.
So the general, I mean, it's like $30,000 of stuff that we need and.
Every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, just typical building maintenance and then that's plus 60.
And then the 60 was for the Alliance Mechanical and.
And that, okay, that is, okay. Roughly 60. Okay. Uh, thank you.
You know, maybe there's some happy medium between a 10%, 10.7% increase in our tax rate and the 3.9% increase.
Can I try here, oh, well, Joe Carroll, I tried very hard to print out off the state website this faculty ratios that the governor asked us to review. We're, we're above the state level for teacher ratios.
Or above than all of it.
Well, I think we're, in 2017, I think we're a little below on the full staff. The report that I was on, maybe it's a different report than what you have. I know, the state doesn't, I know, I know. They're far away and not clear. But we were very, it looked like we were close to the state average on the report that I was trying to.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah. And the, the commissioner, the Secretary of Education sent a letter to everyone, the board members back. Have you folks seen that? I can forward it to you if you don't have it readily available. But this might be what you're referring to as Rebecca Holcomb's memo to all the superintendents, board members.
We talked about it a couple of years.
Yeah, so, yeah, you're above the state average of 4.25 in 2016. And Joe Carroll is just admiring that nice report that Joe Carroll has for you in the package here.
That looks the same as what you've got in the past. I took those ratios at the bottom that you include all the people.
Thank you.
Five and a half.
Right.
When we look at everyone.
If you look at everybody.
Right.
Including the custodian.
This is, this is quite, a focus around the supervisory union. This, you know, this memo has a lot of, you know, a lot of evidence, a lot of research behind it. It's coming from the education leader of the state, so we're trying to pay attention.
So the state average was 4.2?
This has the state average at 4.25 in 2017. And that's, that's all staff divided by, you know, for us, it would be our K through eight escalation.
And so does that correlate to our 5.5 number?
Yes, yeah.
So we're doing.
A little better.
Yeah. Well, that's a lot better, aren't you?
Yeah.
I had a question about the, the health reimbursement accounts. I remember the discussions that we had about how the health reimbursement accounts will be, unused funds will come back to the supervisory union and districts. I'm just wondering when that's going to happen because I see the health reimbursement numbers separately on the, on the budget. And they're fairly significant amounts of money. And I'm wondering when and how does that money, if it's unspent, come back to the, to the school district?
Well, we'll be looking for guidance on that because you, you can imagine how irregular that it's going to be. And the idea of budgeting for the, for the commitment that's in the collective bargaining agreement is pretty sound. But to make an estimate at this point, you know, there's no, we have no experience, no basis for making an estimate. By June, we'll be halfway through the plan year, which is, you know, December, it's January through December.
January, okay.
It's correlated with the IRS tax year because it's all part of a taxable.
Right.
Record that we have to keep track of as employers. So, so we really won't have a very good idea. Even in December, you know, it'll only be 12 months of experience. So we're having these conversations with Laura Sories, the director of Promote School Board's Insurance Trust. So I'm hoping to have some guidance from, from them. You know, other states, other employers have gotten experience with this. So it's not like nobody's ever done this before. So we'll, we'll definitely be looking at that. But I, you know, I think in general, the expectation is that, that there would be a reserve established and then you evaluate, well, is it enough or not? And, and, you know, that's the, that's the question you're asking, and I don't have any data yet.
Well, if, you know, if this year we're proposing that we fund, what is it, 55,000, 55,800, it's on page seven, proposed for elementary school, for the, for the primary school teachers. And half of that is used to, I mean, I guess the guidance will be very helpful, whether or not you need to only budget 25,000, 28,000 next year and carry the balance, or can we use that as a credit to offset some of these, you know?
Yep. Yep. That's a good question, and we will be watching for.
And is that number that's included here, is that the number that is the, based on the contract?
The collective bargaining.
The collective bargaining.
Yeah, but, you know, it's the same thing for things like teacher professional development, that a collective bargaining agreement provides a certain amount of funding, but we don't, we don't budget 100% of that every year.
Because it doesn't get 100% utilized necessarily.
So also because the insurance goes in a, in a calendar year.
Mm-hmm.
And I read on some legislative report, which I have right here, that they're expecting a huge increase in the plan cost of V.I. potentially for the, for the second half of the next school year. Has that been budgeted in?
Mm-hmm.
Great, okay.
Yeah, we, they've, they've estimated a 10% increase on the, on the gold CDHP plan cost. And it would be effective July of 2000, I'm sorry, January 2019. So a 10% increase in January 2019 is a 5%, you know, average impact for fiscal year 2019. So we have built that in. But, yeah, just keep in mind here, I'll just give you a couple of comparison statistics. So, so rates went down about 30%. So keep in mind that health insurance rates went down 30% and now they're talking about coming up 10. And what that means in terms of premium, so for, for all of our, our budget assumptions in the document you have, if you added up all of the health insurance, this year we budgeted 380,000, so that's fiscal year 18. And then in the, the future year, we budgeted 262,000. So that's 120,000 almost less. That's that 30% decline. But it's not like, oh, hip and hooray, here we go with a huge, you know, cost of doing business in the school. Now we have to say, well, okay, 380 compared to 260, plus how much in the HRA? And that's what Michael's just asking. So the HRA, if you add up all of the HRAs in this budget, then you're looking at 80,000. So we're, we're 260 plus 80. So that's, what's that, 340? 340 versus 380. So, so on a net basis, this is what I'm seeing overall. We're, you know, really lowering the cost of education. This was in the news, I think, just today, or maybe I saw, I guess I just saw this legislative update where there's a lot of discussion about the governor saying, hey, you know, and certain folks who are advocating for a statewide system for teacher healthcare are saying, hey, you know, how come we're not saving as much as we thought we would? Because some folks were saying the state would save 100 million. And now, now, you know, I'm hearing numbers like, maybe, maybe it's going to be 30 million. But our own, our own experience, I think, is, is very favorable. And a lot of that reflects who, how negotiated agreements are being settled. And, you know, this system is, is settled very, very closely to what I think the, this governor's task force suggested a statewide system would settle. So we, we're probably, you know, on the lower cost end of what's being offered.
Frank, you mentioned a few minutes ago, a 10% increase to the gold plans. I understand from what we settled on in the.
Gold CDHP, which is very.
But we settled on the silver, I thought, we were benchmarking it to the silver.
No, we benchmarked on the gold CDHP plan.
Okay.
Yeah. Which is very different than the gold plan. Yeah, very, very few people signed up for the, the gold plan. Fortunately, I don't, I don't know, did, did that come up today in the seminar?
Absolutely. He asked the question, this was in a, somebody from Health, from the FS.
Health Equity.
Health Equity folks came. A bunch of folks from the, teachers from the district were there. The question was asked, how many of you signed up for gold CDHP? Just about everybody, you know, there was a smattering, a couple.
Yeah.
Who were doing something else. Pretty much everybody's doing gold CDHP.
So the premium difference, the gold CDHP, right now, the family plan is 17,394. That compares to last month, in December, before we switched to all of these plans, the family plan was 23,792. So that's 30%. You know, that's about 27% drop. So, but folks can sign up for a $22,000 platinum plan, a $21,000 gold plan, and then the silver plan is 15,000. So you might say, why didn't everybody sign up for the silver plan? And the answer is because the maximum out-of-pocket cost is 8,000, much higher than, than 5,000 for the gold CDHP. So it's kind of like the, you know, homeowner's insurance, really high deductible, you lower your, your premium, same concept here.
But that difference then is a little bit offset again by people that are getting the CDHP plan or getting a reimbursement account so that the 30% savings.
All of those, yeah. But all of those plans are eligible for the HRA. But yes, down 30, but then add, you know, we're probably looking at 80, well, 80,000 with this new money, you know, relative to 380, what's that?
You're talking about 40,000.
Yeah, Paul's got it. 80 divided by 380, that's, that's the new money.
Yeah.
20?
Yeah.
Okay, so down 30 and then up 20.
21%.
Pretty good.
Well done, well done.
So, so you see down 30 but up 20 in another, so net, you know, in, in our case, it really depends on who signs up for what plan. But in our case, we're saying we're saving about 40, which is, that is a little more than 10% on 380.
That's great.
Yeah.
Can't wait to try to explain that one. And then there's the potential upside from that if the money isn't used, it is a surplus.
Yeah. My, my thinking is that's probably not something we'll be able to count on for a fiscal year 20, maybe 21 is what, you know, the insurance group says. You've got to have at least a three-year cycle in order to see if there's even a pattern. And for, for us, it's not going to be like a budget breaker. It's not like a nail biter where, you know, what happened to the HRA? Because if it's a budget of 90 and we, you know, I've heard it's not unusual to see these are used to a 75% or 80% level, you know. So that, that leaves, you know, 18,000, $20,000 available. So it could help, but it's not going to change, you know.
The bottom one. But there's a potential upside, eh? It's nice to think about.
Yeah.
So any other, any other questions on line items while we have Frank with us?
So I guess I just have, I'd like clarification. So when you guys go through and look, will you be looking to reduce for the 113,000 that we continue to get to like a bare bones kind of thing? And then would you also present us with what you think is reasonable rather than sacrificing?
And when, when would you like that? Do you have another meeting already scheduled?
No, this is a new idea. So what's everybody's schedule like?
And then I don't know if your town offices, but you know, when they look documents, but it's usually right around.
Luckily, they're not emailing me about it, so.
Yeah, but usually it's, you know, they don't like to see much later than the 20th.
Well, I'm thinking I would like to meet, because we have it on our work plan for this meeting of the 23rd, I believe, off the top of my head, that we would vote on it.
So meeting.
So I'm thinking a meeting next week is what we would have to do. Yeah, the 23rd is one where.
So if we met on Tuesday?
How does Tuesday look?
We're doing FAD Day as Wednesday, so.
Okay, same bat time, same bat channel.
6:30?
What if we?
It would be great if we could have the meeting at 6:30, but maybe have a working session at 5.
Well, the whole thing is a work, the whole thing is a work, the whole thing is a working session. I think this is the only thing on the agenda would be to spend 45 minutes or some, 45 minutes to an hour, just you giving us your presentation of what the bare bones, what the, you know, what you think we can do. And then really making sure that when we go into the 23rd, if we have any other changes that need to be made or any other information that comes to us, that we can have that and come to the 23rd knowing what we're doing. That would be my, is there any other? Does that seem like a good course of events to make sure that we're not trying to do, because we, because we have to decide on the 23rd. I'm not really comfortable.
Yes.
With what we have right now.
And would you be able to meet on the?
Well, I think I got Fern and Ann Guilford on the 16th at evening, so.
Will you meet with me during the day?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. We can get things prepped and, yeah.
Okay, and I can just.
Yeah, because it's really your, you know, your judgment around what the impact is. So I can just help articulate the few scenarios. And yeah, I think you can carry on without me.
Excellent. So 16th at 6:30, Dumerson School, work session to discuss the revised budget.
And you'll have Parneet, Paul.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Frank.
Okay.
Moving, next, next up.
Do I get to go home?
You get to go home. You made the excuse, you did your homework. It's so helpful to have you go over it again and again. And I appreciate your patience with it.
At the time.
Janice, did you get that?
I sent the, I sent the email.
Welcome.
Nice, pretty.
Colors.
Colors.
15.
Good circus.
Orange and blue.
Do you mean like a sapping?
Well, just with what the additional kids would-
Oh, yeah, the 26,000. Yeah, did you see that email?
No, I didn't.
3,300 times, you know, 26,000.
Is there another card?
So, that would offset the-
Uh, that would-
Sorry. My turn.
Because we already- We get now. So, that would-
Very good question. We're going to have our pre-K discussion later, so we could be in a few moments.
Yeah, with the pre-K, with this, when you start a pre-K, unfortunately, you, you have a cost, but you don't have the kids until the next year. They used to have that for most meetings, for, for programs. I don't know if it's still around.
I looked on it. It is still around, so.
And what's that? What are you talking about, Christine, with funding in terms of not having to pay out in an experiment? Are you talking about Lyle talking about a surplus?
I thought there was some surplus. I'll have to go back and listen to the tape. There was some surplus we were holding on to, that according to Lyle, according to Frank, we had a little more in the surplus than we, than the, you know, this, that, this call.
People just were actually surplus.
Fun balance. You're talking about your fun balance. Yeah. So, on our first page, you look at that, yeah. So, yeah, fun balance is-
Oh, I know, down there.
Is-
So, we're not carrying any updates forward to make sure it's legitimate?
No, yes. So, we had, we had a fiscal, fiscal year end, yeah, fiscal year end was better than expected. We, if you looked at your budget document from last year, you would see that we, we were insolvent. We were negative 20,000 fund balance. We budgeted this, you know, remember, we had the discussion about legal fees and it being an offset against the, the negative. So, that, that happened. And then, the SU Supervisor Union had that special ed surplus. And then, we had the additional Medicaid money. And we, we sent that as of June 30th, 2017, to the districts. And that caused Dummerston to run an $88,000 surplus, which paid off the negative fund balance. So, on page one here, your, your current status is, you, you have 59,778 there. And, yeah, that's as of fiscal year '17. And so, I, I'm sure that would have been part of Lyle and I's suggestion for you to consider potential use of some of that, or, or all of it. So, we'll, you know, that's part of-
Okay.
What we'll, we'll weigh against program changes.
But right now, that's sitting there, not in-
That's right, yeah. If, if we had assumed that, you, you've seen in budgets past, we don't have it in this one. Do we have it? I guess it, in not, in any recent history because you don't have fund balance. But, but when we have a planned deficit here, that means you're, you're just spending cash you already have. So, what that would mean is that you, you're spending numbers bigger than your revenue number. So, we, we haven't proposed that because you couldn't do that. You, you, you were, you had no resources to do that. So, sorry about that. That's what you're talking about. I didn't think of it.
Okay.
But if you have a surplus that you could spend some of that, but it would also afford to-
That's right, yeah.
So, we could have potentially $60,000, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. If you went right down to no-
Well, that's silly, but-
And the other thing I wanted to say too, is that in terms of going out to bid for next year, maintenance, that I think is going to do for a bid.
Mm-hmm.
The lunch program is due for a bid. And typically, in the year that you do that bidding, the costs come in more than what you've been paying.
Yeah. Transportation's also due for the bid this year. So, yes, a good point. We, we should, that's, that's a, you know, reason to have a, a little bit of a fund balance in case we can't, we can't predict the, the results of those bids.
And when you say, when you put a projected balance here for, oh, that's FYH, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah. Right, yes.
Sorry about the false start. Thank you very much, Frank, for providing that money that I probably never do.
There we are, yeah. Fun bet.
I don't lose mon, I don't lose track of money.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a foreign concept. And it has been in Dummerston for a couple of years, but we're back on track. That's good. Financially, we're solvent. Okay.
Thank you very much, Frank.
All right.
All right. Now, moving on.
Sure.
So, before I start, it's probably important to talk about different kinds of assessment based on the purposes to which you want to put the assessment data. You can think of three essentially very different kinds of assessment. Summit of assessment is assessment that you want to use to, you want that information to make inferences about sort of overall status of students. Formative assessment, you want to use to inform your instruction. And benchmark and interim assessment, screening assessment, you want to use to kind of pick up on the students that you need to pay more attention to. And whenever I do these data presentations, I present what I think of as possibly the least important of those three. The most important assessment data is the data that teachers use on a day-to-day basis to inform their instruction. That's formative assessment. One good example of formative assessment is every single lesson in the math program that we use has a daily exit ticket that gives a teacher an idea about how much students have, have sort of got in that particular lesson. That's the good stuff, right? That's what drives instruction. And I always feel a little bit bad about presenting results because there's hoopla about these large-scale assessment results when it's really not as important, especially on a day-to-day basis. It's important, but it's not nearly as important as that other data. And I don't, you know, I don't have access to that other. That's, that's, that's stuff that teachers have and use and move on from on a regular basis. So, I'm not presenting you any formative assessment data or benchmark screening assessment data. This is only the large-scale statewide nationals, that kind of national-level data. And as I say, it's important, but I just want to sort of preface what I do by saying it's not the most important. Okay?
Yep.
So, with that said, we have three at this point, although that, that landscape is changing, three statewide, large-scale statewide assess, summative assessments. There's Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium, Sback, English Language Arts. There's Sback Math. Those are done every year in the spring, every grade, three through eight, plus one high school grade. The high school grade is moving from 11th grade to ninth grade this coming spring. So, and they're looking at doing something different at 11th grade. There's a lot of interest, I don't know whether, what's going to come of it. There's a lot of interest in having everyone do the SAT or the ACT. Very different assessments for very different purposes. But anyway, that's the plan. That, we don't need to worry about that because Dummerston's only K8. So, every grade, three through eight, for the English Language Arts and the math assessment. And then, the science assessment, for the last time, was done at fourth and eighth grade last spring. There's a new science assessment coming online that will, that will be pilot-tested this spring. And that's fifth and eighth grade. Okay? There are also some other assessments that we don't have student-level, school-level data for, like the National Assessment of Educational Progress. That's a sort of the nation's report card. That, on that report card, in general, the, we only get data at the level of this, the whole state. In general, students in Vermont do not quite at the top. Most often, Massachusetts is at the top, but just in the, sort of the tier just below that. New Jersey, New Hampshire, sometimes Maine, one of the western states, like South Dakota, I think. But in, in general, they're sort of in the, in the, in the second tier. Very high scores, not, just, just not the highest scores. So, the data that I want to present are just the Sback, ELA, and math, and the science assessment for fourth and eighth grade. So, first page of the, or sorry, second page of the, of the outline, you'll see Dummerston. This is compared to all of the schools in the, in the district. Academy of Green, Dummerston, Guilford, Putney, Vernon, the middle school, WSESU average for grades three through eight, state average for grades three through eight, and then a separate, the high school and the state average for grade 11. Now, the state does not aggregate data to, from grades to a whole school. That's work that I have to do, breaking it back down to individual, you know, sort of X number of students times this percentage at this grade gives you this, you know, sort of figuring out. I have to sort of recalculate that. The reason that they do that, and it's pretty valid, the reason that they do that is they say those assessments at each grade are very different, you know, they're different assessments. Their scores are all projected onto the same scale, but they are sufficiently different that, different that, very strictly statistically speaking, you don't really want to aggregate them. I don't see why we shouldn't to give us a sort of an, an overall index of where we are. If we're doing the same thing for all the schools, I'm okay with doing that. But you won't find, I think you had that, had that problem. You won't find state-level data, you know, state, the state presenting information for all of Dummerston School.
Right, right.
Vermont Digger will do, do exactly what I did-
Right.
And sort of come up with a, with a percentage for the whole school. But this is aggregating all students' grades in Dummerston's case, grades three through eight. Dummerston is at the top of the heap in terms of three through eight, or third through eight schools in the district, higher than the, than the district average, higher than the state average.
And, but some of these schools are three through, like, three through six testing.
Some of those are three through six.
Yeah. I just want to make that, like, it's a little bit out of the doors.
Yeah. But it's, but it's interesting because in the past, my experience has been the, the seven, eight schools, the schools with seven, eight don't necessarily, you know, seven, eight, seventh and eighth grade scores don't necessarily add to your, you know, increasing your average.
They do this year.
They do this year, absolutely. Yeah, I got really strong by it. Okay? So, there's-
And strong teachers, I like to think.
Yes. English Language Arts, yes, absolutely. And then, a sort of a demographic analysis for the, again, aggregated for the whole school.
For the whole, this is Dummerston here?
Dummerston School. On the left is the all-student group. Red is well below proficient. Yellow is nearly proficient. Green is proficient. Blue is proficient with distinction. So, they're all projected on the same scale, so you can kind of do a comparison. Far left is what you want to, would want to compare all the other bars to, right? In general, 74% of students proficient or above on, in English Language Arts. If you compare males and females, you'll see, oh, that's interesting. Significantly more girls scored in the highest category. But in general, there was only, there's only like a 15% difference between, in, in terms of student overall proficiency, right? So, interesting pattern. If you're only looking at percentage proficient, you essentially don't see a gender gap. I'm thinking, huh, that's interesting. Let's keep track of that and see if that's a pattern over time. Similarly, free and reduced versus not free and reduced, there's a gap, right? There's a significant gap in terms of the percentage of students proficient who are not free and reduced eligible, 82% versus 57% for students who are on free and reduced.
Do you know what the state average is for free and reduced?
It's on the order of high 40s, mid-high 40s. Okay.
Thank you.
You get some schools in Burlington that are upwards of 90%. The free and reduced averages are a little hard to calculate, to determine now in Brattleburg Town because they've gone to community eligibility programs. We don't actually get, we get sort of an estimate. And, and those numbers have shot up. They're like 80%. And I don't, I'm not su, I, I, we've got to figure that out because I don't think those are, those aren't numbers from the state nutrition data are not reflected in the power school data that we actually have. So, there's this other thing going on.
Okay. I love data from the state. I was actually trying to ask, what would you, what would the state average for children on free, that qualify for-
The real numbers, I, I'd, it is, the state average is in the high 40s.
Okay. So, the average proficiency, okay, oh, okay, all right.
No, average number of students who are-
Who-
On free and reduced is in the high 40s.
Right. My question is, the num, the, for the students, what would you typically see? Because the achievement gap isn't just happening in Dummerston. So, what would be the proficiency, that, I'm sorry.
A gap of about 25% is not unheard of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then, on the very, the two bars on the far right, special education versus non-special education, a real significant difference. I'll say, what I say every time we raise this, these are students that have had to go through three gates. One, identifying that there is a disability. Two, identifying that the disability is having a significant impact on learning. And three, that some specialized education will provide support for those students. The second gate, these are students who have had, who have a disability that has an impact on their learning. Why are we surprised that there's a difference in these numbers? This is giving them grade-level assessments. It's always bothered me that we somehow, because we have to do this presentation, that we somehow expect that we would want those students scoring at the same level as, as students not on an I P. I don't think that's a reasonable assumption. I think it's perfectly reasonable to say we need to do everything in our, that are possible to, to, to make sure that these students are doing as well as, as, as possible. But I-
I think it also probably shows that you have the right students pegged for special education. You can look at it the other way, that it's not simply about getting the students who are in special education to achieve grade level, but that you have the right students within a special education program, and that you don't have students somehow masking or somehow trying to get away with something by, you know, in, in a special education program that perhaps shouldn't be there.
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay. So, that's the demographic breakout. There is no real demographic breakout at a grade level simply because the sample sizes are too small. We can't report sample sizes less than 10, and most, and some, most of the, the, the class sizes are under 20. So, you wouldn't expect to have that number of students. Here, it is broken out by grade level. Next, that's the next slide. Blue is Dummerston, orange is the state. And you can see there's some, some differences, as you always see with cohorts. Small groups of students can, a few students scoring well or not on a given day can have an impact on, on, you know, when, when your sample sizes are within 20. And also, if you want to track this over time, there are also cohorts of students that over, that historically tend to do well on these sorts of assessments, and cohorts of students who tend to do not as well. Next slide. And I apologize for this one, but what I wanted to show here was, this is historical data, the three years of Sback that we have. It's a lot to encompass, but one of the things I wanted to show is, every school experiences some cohort differences over, over, over year. Things bounce up and down. Notice that, say, the state at three to eight, relatively stable compared to some of our smaller schools or some smaller class sizes, where the, the numbers fluctuate a little bit more. But in general, you can also see Dummerston schools scoring very high in the, in the three years that we have data. Very high relative to other schools and, and the district and the state generally. Okay? Next slide, the green. That's math, same, same setup, math, all grades, percentage proficient. Notice that there's a, there's a drop. I mean, 10, 10 points, probably, 74% proficient in, in ELA, 63% in, in math. But that's consistent for all of the schools being presented.
Is that consistent-
Statewide.
Statewide?
Yeah, sure.
And then, is it consistent between states? Do you know?
I think it is.
I'm curious if it's-
I don't know. I think so.
Is, is it an artifact of the test, or is it an artifact that Vermont doesn't teach math well, I guess?
I think it's an artifact that more emphasis is given in a bunch of states, including Vermont, on literacy instruction as opposed to, to math instruction. One reason is the- One reason is, the, I think I've heard estimates, that the research base on effective math instruction is potentially as much as 20 years behind the research base on effective literacy instruction.
And I think it's always been that way, because even when I was in high school, math scores were lower than English words, always.
It's just sort of interesting how you determine proficiency when, you know what I'm saying, like you're calling something proficient, but nobody's reaching that proficiency level, and so...
Well, that's what, and that's what's interesting about a standard, a standards-based assessment, a criterion-referenced assessment as opposed to a norm-referenced assessment.
Right.
With a criterion-referenced assessment, some group of people have to get together to say, this represents the standard, this is what we're looking for. And in general, math standards are written fairly rigorously. And so, you look at the standard, you say, yeah, kids really have to perform here in order to be, because this is what it says is proficient, that represents this scale score, right? And in general, students aren't performing up to that scale score in the same way that they are for English Language Arts. It's also, in general, it's okay to say, I'm not good at math.
Yeah.
Nobody ever says, I'm not a reader.
Yeah.
Or hardly ever. Right? Okay, moving on. So, there's math. Demographic analysis, similarly, all students in the left-hand column. Females versus males, interestingly, a higher percentage of males showing the strength in math. We detected, I can recall, 10, 15 years ago, a pretty strong gender gap. And it feels like we paid attention to it, and that gender gap went away. And I'm a little concerned that we may be seeing a gender gap redevelop. And I want to make sure that that starts to get out to teachers in grade-level meetings. Just as a, hey, guys, looks like, you know, I want to watch the data a little bit. But, this also showed up in Putney, a gender gap. And I want to, I want to track it because I don't want us to go there again. And if we can start paying attention to that and maybe do some professional development around that, that might be something that would help the situation. Okay? Free and reduced, again, SES gap, poverty gap between free and reduced and not free and reduced, on the order of 30%, maybe 25%. And a gap in special education. So, similar patterns there, similar patterns in terms of variance in grade-level scores. In general, you can see the blue, Dummerston is scoring well above the state. Some cases, twice the state rate in terms of percentage proficiency. In a couple of cases, not so much. So, some real cohort differences over time. And then, again, that, you sort of notice the variance, more variance in the math scores over the three years, 2015, 16, 17.
Can we go back to the previous one? So, I guess my question is, looking at the large swings from grade to grade. Have you looked at the data from the two previous years and compared those grades to see if there's something in the programming that is interesting?
No, haven't done that, would be a great thing to look at. See, that is to say, is fourth grade consistently, for instance?
Right, fourth and fifth grade are they consistently lower than, and it seems like there's a huge jump in sixth grade. Do we see that?
Right.
Yeah.
I'll say that I have looked at it a little bit, and fourth grade in math, I have the scores here, the fourth grade overall in math, it does seem a little bit lower S-U-wide, especially this year. Like Putney went from 50 to 26, or their third grade is at 50, and this year it's at 26, and then it goes up to 50 again for the fifth grade. So, I mean, like, if you're just looking down, I mean, you have the cohort, but last year, that cohort in 2016, when they were in third grade, was 47% and went down to 26%. So, like, it would make, that's a great question, I think, about that. Because if I just look across the, Oak Grove seems to be...
Or I'm just looking at the Dummerston.
But I've got the other one, so it does look like that number is kind of happening in other places.
And here's another way to look at it. What is the nemesis of elementary math? Fractions. When do fractions get taught? Fourth grade.
Except they probably get just as tough for everybody else in the state as they do in our SU.
Right.
So, that's why, but that's why this is helpful.
Right. And, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, moving on. Cohort data, I'm sorry, longitudinal data, 2015, 16, 17. So, general summary, S-Back, we're at the high, Dummerston is at the high end of WSAS schools, at WSCSU schools overall for both English Language Arts and math. Above state and SDU averages across the board for ELA and math. Gap still exists in general, socioeconomic status and disability groups. Some big differences in performances by grade levels, some differences in performance over time. The next slide is, yeah, and gaps still exist. And that's the piece we really need to stay on top of. That's the big message, I think, for all of this, is Dummerston's doing great, but just like all the other schools in the district, we've got a problem with these gaps. And there's something we need to continue to work on. Okay, questions on that? That's all, the S-Back.
What's the expectation? I mean, is the expectation to teach away, out of the gaps that exist?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the goal for my whole lifetime, probably, is to try to do that, so...
But I did, I did notice the Special Ed kids did much better in math.
Yeah. That's good.
I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, it really is. I mean, there, it's clear that students in poverty have fewer resources. And I think it's reasonable to say, and we can adjust for that, and we can compensate for that with the kinds of support that we provide. Multi-tiered systems of support is really the main strategy for that. I think some of the proficiency stuff that we're starting to work on is also, that would be a way to really engage students a little bit more. I suspect that one of the issues with creating a poverty gap is a sense of lack of engagement for a lot of students. The relevance and the importance of school may not be reinforced sufficiently. So, having a way to engage students via some sort of proficiency, I think, is a great way to go. But I think it's doable. Okay, kneecap science. This is both, fourth grade is blue, eighth grade in orange. Exactly the same level for percentage proficiency in both grades, 2017 compared to and above the district and the state. Fairly typical pattern statewide, district and statewide, of a decline in science scores from fourth to eighth grade.
But not here.
No, not here.
That's wonderful.
Yes, yes. That's a good thing.
I just want to like, former science teacher, I just want to enjoy that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, savor that. So... Fourth grade, eighth grade longitudinally, 2015, 16, 17, and comparisons with the two Dummerston grades, district-wide the two grades, and statewide the two grades.
I'd like to trend on the Dummerston eighth grade.
Yeah, yeah. As I say, this will be the last of these kneecap data, and who knows? End on a good note, right?
Because you'll never look at it again, and you wonder why, yeah.
So, just to break out a different way to look at it, substantially below proficient, partially proficient, and proficient. No students at fourth or eighth grade were in the proficient with distinction category. Very few across the district, a handful.
Pretty rare across the straight states, statewide.
Yep. Yep. And then, the last two slides are simply sort of more of a breakdown by domain for each of the two grades. The dot is school level and error bars around that. So, very small sample size means large error bars. But the average possible points, 65% of possible, of 30 possible points for physical science, compared to district, which is well below that state, which is a little higher. And so, you can compare each of those. Overall, inquiry is lower, but fourth graders at Dummerston scored higher than both the state and the district. Make sense?
What is your take on that? Have you seen those questions? Like, why is it so low for inquiry, which seems like the fun thing to teach at a fourth grade level?
Well, a lot, I think a lot of the inquiry is in the performance task. And so, as an extended task, it's a little, it's a little more problematic for students.
Thank you.
I think, I think probably is a chunk of that.
Thank you.
And then, a much stronger performance for inquiry for the eighth graders in all categories, but certainly for inquiry. Look at life science, just massively higher. So, some really good, really good scores, there's stuff to really grab on.
And with that, you're putting the caveat that this is just a test. It's only a test. And there's so many more important things we do than this, but it is nice to see that for these things that are measurable, that our students are performing, and it's thanks to our great staff here.
Absolutely. And it's really, it is valuable to ask the question, are our students learning the standards that we've set for them? And by and large, the answer is, yeah, pretty much. At Dummerston, significant percentages of students are demonstrating proficiency and those standards that we've indicated are important. That's a really great thing to say. I, maybe I'm a little sensitive because I have been accused of, well, where's all the other important data? You know, like, how students are feeling about themselves and how, you know, stuff that we don't necessarily measure in this particular way. And when I get asked to present these data, this is what I have to present. By the way, the state assessment system is changing somewhat. There will now be a statewide physical education assessment. They will use the fitness gram and report those data statewide. There's also, these data are not being used in the same way for accountability. There's a different accountability system. They're still in there, there's a sort of a yearly snapshot of data. But this fall, and I don't know whether folks talked about it, the integrated field review that we went through, this district sent people out to a bunch of neighboring districts, and a bunch of neighboring district people came to look at what we were doing. Those recommendations have been presented to the, we've got an initial presentation at the last leadership team, we're going to have a final presentation the next, like, Friday or a week Friday. And then, we can sort of give you a little bit, we haven't had, been given the official report yet, but give you some information on that. In general, we, sort of, very favorable results, some good commendations for some stuff that we're doing, so... But it's a, it's part of a, sort of a different system where we are no longer identifying schools in need of improvement, but rather, where are your strengths, where are your weaknesses? This is sort of a more nuanced view of schools and supervisory.
So, when can you assume, across the board?
Yep.
So, when could boards expect to see some sort of, are there going to be some, is that data going to be made available to boards? Or is there going to be a report made that sort of summarizes for school boards?
I suspect, we'll probably talk about that at leadership. I suspect that what we'll do is, the list of commendations and recommendations just be presented at each of the board meetings.
Supervisory union-wide.
Yeah, there's no school level. It's not school level.
But they came to the schools. So, we don't have school-level data, so as we're thinking about what the things are that we should be funding, we don't have the data for that. Okay. That sounded really good up until that point.
Sorry.
Okay.
And they specifically, as part of the interview process, they make it clear, any comments that you make that are sort of summarized up into this, commendations and recommendations cannot have any school-level information pertaining to them.
Why is that?
The, it's only a day, and there's only a limited number of people coming to the school. And so, the notion is that we really want to look for overall trends to be able to make any kind of summary statement. And, the state is, I mean, I think it's also a philosophical change. The state is really looking to whole supervisory unions to be agents of change rather than dealing with individual schools. They really are saying, we want you to be thinking about this systemically as a supervisory union.
It just seems like a great opportunity to try and do better if you have feedback, and you can say, that's not good, that's ridiculous data, or not ridiculous data as a principal and a board and teachers, so it's kind of a...
Yeah, if you understand that it's a one-day, single snapshot of...
Much like an S-Back assessment.
Yeah, much like an S-Back assessment. For the, for the WSCSU as a whole, what do you think that Dummerston is doing that can be modeled by other schools to improve their scores?
I think there's a level of cohesiveness of the staff. I think it's been a particularly stable staff. I think the departmentalization that you're doing in five, six, seven, eight is showing up here. And I think the level of commitment to academic support that you have are all pieces that can, that are being, you know, sort of are mirrored in other, in other places. But certainly, I, they, for me, they show up as being real strengths and leading to, to the kinds of scores that you get.
Adding on to that, I'd also like to understand why Oak Grove ranks right up there with, Oak Grove and Dummerston are, you know, head-to-head, and yet I know Oak Grove's poverty rates are...
Significantly higher.
Significantly higher. So, I think for us, that would be a great learning tool, to see what Oak Grove is doing and figure out how we could use it to impact.
Yeah, and I think the parallels, I think, if I think of Oak Grove, I think that the strength of the intervention program really makes a difference.
Is it a behavior intervention program?
Well...
What, a behaviorist like Guilford does, or is it...
No, the, actually, the academic intervention.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, again, cohesiveness in the teams, some strong folks in those, in those slots, and lots of attention being paid to making sure that the students that we're seeing with the screening assessments are getting the support that they need. And, they're, it's two, kind of, feels like two different takes on the same set of tools, you're using the tools in slightly different ways. Oak Grove doesn't have the same skills lab that you folks have. But, in general, that's what I see as really, the common elements is that really strong multi-tiered systems of support. Good, strong core instruction followed with quick identification, intensive, intentional work with the students that need the intervention. I think the real, it's more like, what can the other schools, you know, sort of replicate in these two slightly different models but that have very similar characteristics?
Hire good people and trust them.
Yeah, yeah.
They're both smaller schools, too.
That's true.
I mean, I think that that helps with cohesiveness.
Yeah, and, and, you know, just know that, I've seen it happen, a really highly functioning system can get the stuffing knocked out of it if you have some key losses of personnel, changes of personnel, folks that retire or move on or something. It's surely about good people and finding those groups of good people that work well together. And sometimes, you get hit with some staff turnover that takes a while to get you back up to speed. Nature of the beast.
We just won't, we won't accept those donations.
Right, there you go.
Do you know what, do you know, so maybe this is the issue that we're talking about before, because I was trying to get to Oak Grove's FRL number, and I got all these different numbers depending on where I looked. And that's the problem you're talking about.
Yeah, it's, we're still, sort of, community eligibility nutrition program is still kind of fuzzy enough that I think those numbers aren't, I don't trust those numbers as much as I trust the numbers that I'm actually seeing at Power School.
Okay.
And I think we're just going to shake out.
Because it was, it was for Brattleboro, relatively low poverty level, whatever I looked at compared to Green Street and Academy. So, that also is going to perhaps affect the scores.
Yeah, the most recent nutrition data have all three of those schools at 80% poverty. Yeah, the most recent nutrition data have all three of those schools at 80% poverty. And that's not, I just don't think that's right. So...
Okay. Thank you for shedding light on that. I just assumed it was a wacky thing. Everywhere I looked, it was a different piece of data.
Well, and it's data that are taken at different points in time.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Any other?
This was really great. Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
One of the things, too, I want to say about the qualitative data that they were trying to get, state was trying to get through the IFC.
IFR, Integrated Field Review.
The morning and the afternoon session each had student-led tours of the school, which were phenomenal. I mean, it was, you know, they had done a couple dry runs, they had practiced what they wanted to highlight for when they went around, to the point with both sessions, younger kids were in the afternoon, older kids were in the morning, saying, okay, speed, we've got some more stuff to do, but no, let us start ball field. See this concession stand that was built by the PTFO? I mean, it was, let's just take it to the garden. They did a wonderful job.
It's a great opportunity for a student.
The teachers, the people that had come, both groups that left said, you know, how long have those kids been training to do this? And these were kids, one kid from each grade, K to four, and then five to eight. It's like, well, no, they met yesterday for the first time, and they kind of fell into their roles, and it was great. Jen, I think, got some of it on video.
Oh, I'd love to see that. I'd love to see that. That's, might be a really great thing to have on a website, actually, for your school, to have a, an inter, so for people that are thinking about the school, to have a student-led tour of the school? Because, I mean, I was making my decision on where to move to about schools, and it is a really nice tool if you could look into a school somewhere. Might be a great project for, so. Marketing, marketing our fabulous school and students.
And I know we've talked about the instruction and stuff like that, that, you know, the kids get, but I also feel like we need to give you the girl credit, because you are the leader of the school, and you set the tone. So, you know, a lot of this comes from you.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy, very much for saying that. Absolutely. Thank you, Joe Carroll.
Well, tell you, starts the board.
National Innovation Society, don't they?
Just, and now, it's all a good note.
Do a group hug.
So, anybody need a small break so we can plow through the rest of this stuff? Or should we just go for it?
Go for it.
All right. Administrative report, Joe Carroll.
Well, I just wanted to say, I have a rocky back, rocky reentry from the holiday break.
Yeah.
It's like, what week did we just miss? But it was fine. The kids handled it. And in the midst of all of the weather crisis, Wednesday for winter activities, the first day was perfect. It went off without a hitch. They came back. It was fine, and I think we can expect the same thing tomorrow. It's just so important that Wednesdays are good days, good weather days. And they, yesterday, we took our asset team back up to Landmark for sort of a regrouping, re-practicing, seeing where we are. I've got pictures of two of the kids. One's Kelton, one's Abby Barnes, working. And this time, they broke the kids up, so they, our kids were working with other kids in other schools, Bams, Green Street, Academy, I'm not sure if Bernie was there. But anyway, they got to work with other kids on sort of their life solar systems, which are a lot of the sort of leadership things that we're doing in middle schools in general. When you think of perseverance, people skills, contributing to the community, solving conflicts, celebrating diversity, and planning and making decisions. So, their day was spent in different activities with different leaders. Some were high school students in the social justice program, is it the social justice program at the high school?
Restorative justice.
Right. Which Mary has been bringing back here and doing a lot of work with circle groups of kids, problem-solving. They worked with teamwork and friendship, people skills. There was a group of high school kids coming and just talking to them about transitioning to the high school and middle school, and listening to different points of view and having an open mind. And then, we sat at the end and went through the different activities that they had been involved with, kind of raided them, and got opinions from them about what they thought was good and we should keep, and what we need to look at or change for the next time. It was, it's fun to have a day when you can work with kids on that level outside of school. Landmark does a great job for us. So, that's it. That one activities went off without a hitch. We're on roll. Yeah. Pop off for Michael.
All right. Committee reports. The last WSSU board meeting, we adopted the transgender and wellness policies that our board had commented on. I think all of our changes were incorporated. Am I remembering that correctly?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I got to say, it was really, people from other towns like, whoa, we can't have bake sales! Wait a minute! And so, it was good that, before adopting the policy, that...
We had read them.
We had read them. Thank you, Michael. Because on the third reading, that, you know, wait a minute. And so, we, and I think the person who was shepherding them, who happens to be sitting to my right, I mean, we got through, those were pretty long policies to get through, and I think Hithia, you know, that was a lot to get through. And we really, the whole SU board worked really well together to listen to people's issues. The wellness policy was, you know, people just trying to really weigh what we're doing now to where we want to get to, and how can we create language that allows us to transition over time, as opposed to trying, doing things that might feel like, feel like it would penalize programs that are, teachers have been doing for a long time. So, that went really well. And my hats off to Michael for really bringing the transgender policy discussion to a close in a really fruitful way. A lot of people came up to me afterwards and complimented me. So, I'll just do it in public right now to say, you really brought things to a closure. And that's, it's, you know, there's a lot of people in a room to agree on anything is hard, so I appreciate what you did. And a lot of people said, wow, that was really great, how you put it and moved it forward.
Don't be surprised if they come back one more time for final approval, because there were changes. They will need to be.
Oh, you had to have the final reading. The final reading. Thanks. Burst my bubble. Thanks, Paul.
But it's just pro forma. You can just...
Hopefully so. Hopefully so.
Yeah.
But we got through a lot that night. And that was pretty much the entire agenda besides the budget, which has been, is there any finance committee?
There was no finance committee meeting in advance of that last WSSU meeting. The last finance committee meeting that we had, we adopted, or recommended to adopt the budget that was presented to the full WSSU board. It was adopted by the full WSSU board, and that's where that stands.
Excellent. Any other SU finance committee, board kind of things that I'm missing? After eight o'clock, I start to turn into a pumpkin. For buildings and grounds, I put paving bids on there, because I just want to make sure we don't lose track of that. And find out if you need help with that, where it stands. I'd really like that to get accomplished. I think we all would very much like to, before we steal it for something else, because we did say to the voters, that's what we were going to do.
No, we're going to do that. And Central Office is going to help with that. They needed some information from me in terms of the scope of what we're looking at in terms of paving. I didn't have the answer quickly, so it got buried. Now, find it and get it to them.
So, when would we expect, so we're thinking this would happen?
I'm thinking the bids would go out soon, this winter, by February.
Okay.
By the end of February.
Okay.
And that, we would have, we'd make the decision about what we're going to have, and they would be able to start at first, good weather day.
So, we wouldn't try to do it, like, we're at the end of school or something, so that you don't, you know?
I think we would look at, like, April vacation, maybe.
Oh, that's a great idea. Okay.
Or, you know, the long, long weekend, too.
It could really depend on what the asphalt plants are up and running, too.
Right. The weather.
But there's definitely, you know, at least a week at the end of June before the fiscal year closes, and we could get it all built in that period of time, anyway.
That's what I was kind of wondering, if that would make sense.
You could get a building, and if they end up having to do it in July, it still will be built and paid for, which is much easier. And we would need to do the same thing for the lunch program and for grounds and mowing.
The food program I have on the work plan for the 24th of April, is that too, that's where we put it?
To make a decision about whether or not we're going to bid it, or?
I think, I thought we were going to bid it.
Yes, that's what I thought, so.
I thought we had decided definitely we were going to bid it, and that we were going to do that on the 24th of April. Does that not make sense?
That's a pretty, it's a, do what on the 24th of April?
I thought we were going to consider the bids on the 24th, but maybe that's too early.
Okay.
No? That probably isn't too early. Well, I know we were moving that schedule around a lot.
It's a fun process.
That's a good one? Okay.
Yeah, they come and compete. Get good food that night.
So, we get fed.
Top chef, Dummerston.
Get fed, okay, good. Okay, I'm jealous of Brattleboro. They seem to get fed a lot, so that would be nice.
But there's a pretty thorough checklist of things that you have to look at in terms of this bidding process of...
Compliance.
Yep, and, and it has to be done with by a group of people, not just, so that, what you will look at is bids, what they come in at, and then how they're evaluated based on this group of people that look at how they met the bid criteria, I guess.
Seems like a lot in three months, so keep us posted. And then, it also has to be done for the maintenance, for the...
For the grounds, mowing. And don't worry about that, because folks have been all the time wanting to know that bid's going to blow up.
Okay.
That's a, the cotton drive, one. People that, in the area that bid on it are familiar with what needs to happen, and what grounds they need to cover, and how they need to provide the information to us, so.
And so, is that something that we would have to review particularly at a, should I think about penciling it into the work plan, I guess, is the question?
By a certain date.
Yeah. It's nice to have it in there as a placeholder, maybe, too, just so we don't lose track.
Yes, in April, around the beginning of April would be good. Oh, my gosh, that's...
Well, we have the, on the April 10th, we have facilities review and capital plan development. So, that might be a good time to do a whole thematic unit.
Bids.
Okay.
Because these bids cover a couple fiscal years. Like, this one went into this fiscal year, up until November, December, and it ends, and the new one would click in again in our fiscal year, but...
Gotcha. Thank you, Joe Carroll. The Dummerston AGS WSSU subcommitting. The proposal went up on the 26th. The proposal had unanimous, unanimous support from Vernon split in Putney. They asked that, the letter changed many times in a very short period of time before Christmas, as I was trying to make the AGS, but I think they asked the Board of Education to consider the alternative governance structure, and if not, to implement the articles as much as they could be implemented by the State Board of Education. Guilford has preferred, has, the Guilford Board has asked that the articles be implemented, and the Brattleboro Board, I believe, was split, but they have also asked for the articles to be implemented by the State Board of Education. So, what happens next? It's gone up to the secretary. We're going to have a conversation with the secretary, and we'll see how things suss out and what modifications have to be made. I think it is a good discussion for us to have about, as a board, if we're not getting, if it's not going to be the AGS that we proposed, are there other things that we'd be interested in proposing to the state as these conversations go forward and modifications? But it's not on, I'm not putting on the agenda now at 8:15. So, maybe we can talk about that a little bit more on the 23rd, if there's time. We're waiting for legal opinion from Paul Gillis, who was absent because he was battling the flu for a week and a half. So, he's just started to communicate back on some of the legal issues that were raised by the supervisory union. Lyle has asked the board if we would like to post the alternative governance structure on the Dummerston school board website, so that it's accessible to voters.
I move that we post the AGS on the website.
Second. Discussion?
Why would we do that when we wouldn't post the articles from the study committee?
Well, they were on the SU website on the, under a separate heading for Act 46.
But we wouldn't do anything in town related to the Act 46, and we're a part of that. This is a similar situation.
Well, it was...
They had their own, I mean, the Act 46 had its own even heading under the board's structure of the website. If you went down from the menus, it went, you know, Boards, all the towns, and the Act 46 committees, so a place where you could find all of that information. This is a town, school board-led effort that would implicate other towns, hopefully, in wanting to achieve some of the goals that are set forth in Act 46.
But that was the same, in, same purview for the study committee. It was following Act 46, and with all the towns involved, and trying to come up with a solution. So, I'm just, I don't care if it gets posted to the website. I'm just pointing out the discrepancy in the two.
Can I just ask a question? Do you need the Dummerston website?
No, I mean the WSSU. When somebody's looking at minutes and finding out...
Oh, I thought you were talking about Dummerston.
No, I'm sorry, the Dummerston, on the WSS, Lyle asked on the WSSU.
I don't care.
Okay. Okay. Because I'd like it to, thank you, Joe Carroll. All right.
Friendly amendment to my motion. I move that we post the alternative governance structure as sent up to the state onto the WSSU website under the Dummerston Town School Board section.
Second that. Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry about any misunderstandings.
Any further discussion about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayors extensions? Ayes have it. Thank you. Sure, there's nothing else on that. Yeah, that's next. I just want to make sure there's nothing on that, because I'm trying to read my chicken So, for, under the other business, and Michael, I'm sorry, I did this before you arrived, I added, Lyle had asked, had discussed a recommendation from the VSPA and the state that we all adopt WSU, WSSU-based email addresses that could then dump into our personal email addresses, so that, for a variety of reasons. And it isn't any more work for anyone, so long as it works like it's supposed to, because I've had times that it, things like that don't work like they're supposed to. So, I think it'll be important for... don't work like they're supposed to, so I think it'll be important for us to keep, to have methods when it gets implemented, that we make sure we're getting our emails through that and maybe have some back checks and responding, but, you know, if there's a FOIA request or whatever, having been through that and having to comb through my emails to find, at that point hundreds, it's, it might be helpful to have a separate thing at the SU level as well in case we're ever in that situation.
Is that an action item for tonight?
So that, I added that action item on to other business.
Yeah.
To have a quick discussion about it and if there's any.
Makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me.
Any other?
I would be interested to find out if, if the town might be interested in hosting the Dummerston Town School Boards, just because we have a town-based website already that would serve a similar purpose, that's all. But it does make sense to have a, have a non-personal email account that would serve the school board business.
But the student, the students already have a W SCSU.
Right.
Email, anyway, so.
Yeah, I think in terms of consistency, it'd be best.
Cause the students, that's the same as the students.
And the teachers.
Yeah, emails.
And so what would be your thought behind having the towns do it, any?
Well, we're a town school board, I mean, we are a part of the WSSU and I get that, but maybe it's possible to host it out of the town.
We have central office that's providing these services and the town doesn't necessarily have a IT person doing this, it's more.
Yeah, if you wanted to do it through WSSU, it's a, a motion here and then your names get given to Gary who will give you, then send you out, you know, sort of set up all the accounts for you and send, send you the, the information.
So we could, you could explore the town option, and I'm giving it to you because you're interested in doing that, and we could vote on that at the next meeting.
Yes.
When we have the information. I like sort of the consistency of WSU.org, but, dot org, right? But. If you're up for doing some research, I'm all ears and postponing it a week or two isn't going to, it's going to catch fire, so. Okay, pre-K discussion. It's helpful to probably have that after the budget. Oops, Frank, can he respond to my email about that? Oh. So we had asked Frank to provide us with some preliminary numbers on the pre-K, we were going to add pre-K and sort of what that would do to the budget. Not a great year to do anything to the budget, but I think it's helpful to see the numbers. But I also wanted to sort of have, get people's read on what their feeling was about the forums and the surveys and what people's, if this, they thought, if we had all the money in the world, would this be something that we should invest in? Is there a need?
Given the hour, I would suggest that maybe we consider tabling this where we can have a more thoughtful, lengthy discussion versus at eight, almost 8:30 at night going into this.
Can I just tell you what he's?
That would be great.
I'm not sure, you know, I asked him to do a, a budget with a projected eight pre-k scores. And he said, yes, the state, the new state announced rate per school district obligated to pay for qualified pre-K programs is $3,267 per child, sometimes eight is $26,136. And he quantified the tax impact slash cost per student for the board at tonight's meeting.
Oh.
I assume we're not budgeting a public pre-K program at Dummerston, oh, I assume we're not planning one for next year.
Oh.
Correct. So, and I think what he said when he was leaving is that $26,136 would be an additional revenue. Well, additional, not revenue, because we don't really get it from the state, but additional ADM offset.
Okay. So those kids aren't already in there in that budget? I think there would be incremental children if we were offering, I think that was the assumption, because there are children that are not in programs that we're partnering with now that we hope we would capture. Eight seems optimistic though.
Well, that's what Jody had on her list.
But I think Jody's list is, is all of them.
Jody's list had?
No, it was like seven, eighteen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't that include three and four-year-olds at eighteen?
It did, that's what it is, that's eight, right.
But I thought that was only like the public pre-K programs was that number eight, so there, I, I thought there were still other children.
Children that maybe aren't.
I think I divided it in half because I would think it was three and four-year-olds and I think we weren't.
No, she had, she had them from every place.
Really?
Yeah, she said she called all those schools to find out.
So she called all the private.
And she went to the birth rate, so she went to the welcome wagon, Pete.
I think she believes that she probably didn't get them all, but.
Probably came quicker than anybody else was ever going to get. So maybe we could prior, I don't want to make next week's because it's an additional, it's an add.
I'd like for it to be on the 23rd. We'll do the budget and then we can sit down and talk about this.
And so I thought I was going to propose that we put it on the 23rd and then maybe we can have a little bit of an opportunity between now and the 23rd to kind of just think about some scenarios and potential costs and then put Jody's numbers to that and get Frank to give us an actual number to talk about. But I would like to say we, we do want to, do we want to talk about this anymore?
Yes.
My first question was.
We haven't really had a solid conversation, you know, we've had the forums, but that was it.
But that's what my initial question was, based on the forums, is this something that we are interested in continuing to talk about? That was my question, and then we can.
We have an obligation to do so, yeah.
Just real quick, so we can move on, Tammy McNamara and I created the survey, but we haven't moved forward with it to maybe give to kindergarten parents, possibly first and second grade parents. So I'm, we created that document, I believe I shared it with you, I thought, we all looked at it, but maybe we didn't.
We did have it, I copied it that night.
I don't know.
Send it out with Udall.
That's right.
So I, I haven't seen, can you?
Yeah, of course.
So the, the action item would be we'll send that out and that would be another piece of data to see if Jody, to test Jody's data to see if she got everyone. I love that idea. Okay. So we will table that until the 23rd.
So should I send it to people on that list that I have the addresses for that aren't going to school, that?
No, this was for parents that currently have kids in kindergarten and first and second to, to get historical data, like about what happened prior to their children.
Where the kids went.
Yeah.
Just FYI, you have eighteen second payment for pre-K providers, you had eighteen Dummerston students in a whole variety of programs.
That looks good.
Three and, three and four.
Oh, three and four, that's awesome. Well, that's, all right, only the ones that are turned off.
This is all the publicly funded pre-K, not any private providers who are not participating in that program.
Or children that are not in any program at all.
So maybe she has ninety.
Tammy McNamara, twenty.
No, that's public.
Oh, that's right. And then, so, that's wrapped. So minutes discussion, because you weren't here, Michael, there was some input on the minutes, so we tabled it till now.
Yep.
Also Frank and Paul. Although it's riveting stuff of boards, didn't need to hang out for a little bit more. Dang it.
Are you kicking me out?
No, no. Hey, how you spend your free time is up to you, Paul, I don't judge you.
I got some homework to do.
Ty's got some homework, but that's, you know, I won't judge you as a parent. Thank you very much, Paul.
You bet.
So I guess I just started with that there's a lot of typos and under finances, when we, in particular, page three, it's hard to understand that paragraph about the cap. I don't, I think that entire thing needs to be reworded because it's confusing and I even somewhat understand the whole thing. So the revenue is 172. I don't think that should blend into the eighty, $835 over the cap.
Spending threshold is the better word there.
Yeah. There's just language problems all throughout, you know, there's, in addition to typos and it's, you know, there's some choice of words that seem a little questionable, like over on page four and.
Well, let's go through one at a time so I can correct it to your satisfaction or at least to the satisfaction of us voting on the minutes.
We try and present, you know, when, something that's professional and sort of neutral and this doesn't, it, it feels at times, particularly when I'm being quoted, that it gets a little more.
So spending threshold, cap should be changed to spending threshold on page three.
Okay, so top of page three, RE conflict, line one, it should be conflict of interest in serving the Dummerston School Board, because that, you know, thinking about our audience is going to be people who are not familiar with what's going on with the school board. And, and the finances, you know, big decrease in tuition from thirty and a half to six, you know, I don't know if we need the word big, it's just a decrease, you know, we, we believe when we estimated, we thought we were getting, what, two or three students that year and I don't know if they actually materialized or not, so. I don't know. I was saying strike big. And then that entire, next paragraph needs to be cleaned up so it's actually understandable. And then on page four, under Act 46 AGS, the concern about the overall transparency of the process was expressed by Amy. I don't know that I was expressing concern about the process. I'd have to go back and look at the tape to remember exactly, but I was more concerned about the fact that, you know, asking for a heads-up from the chair saying we are going to go through this, you need to have it done.
Okay, well, here's what I suggest, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you want to look at the tape and look at suggestions, perhaps we table approving the minutes until the next meeting so that you can actually come through with your suggestions.
I have them. I'm giving them to you.
I understand, but another section, you talked about cleaning up so it's readable. I'd be happy to take your suggestions on what that is. Again, if you want to check the, the language by reviewing the tape and then make your suggestion, I'm happy to wait and table this.
But I'm not the clerk and I don't feel it's my job to.
Well, if you're asking for corrections, then you can.
And I am giving you those corrections. I have given you corrections.
So I'm going to suggest that we, because it is on tape, that we can really shorten this, shorten that whole piece a whole lot and just, I don't, the threshold was.
Meaning the revenue piece?
The, under the finances piece that Amy wants to be clearer because it is on the tape and so just, I don't think that, to try to explain the threshold and double taxation and penalty.
We don't want to do that.
It's too hard to do on here, I think, so I think it's just fine to take that out and we have a budget discussion about the threshold every year and it's a lot, it's a big ask and there is, it is on tape, so if somebody wants to go back and find it, I feel comfortable just striking a lot of that.
Yeah.
Cause these are like, these are huge minutes and thank you for doing them, Michael, but it is also on tape, so we have, we have a lot of transparency going on.
Yeah, so, and again, like I said, under Act 46, I wasn't expressing concern about the transparency of the AGS, you know, I was expressing concern that it wasn't clear from the get-go that we'd be reviewing it and approving it that, that evening, so. That, that was, I'm, I know in particular was my concern.
Yeah.
It wasn't made clear.
No, and I apologize a million times over for that.
Yeah, it's not necessary, but I'm just trying to clarify for Michael so that he can.
But I still like, but I felt terribly bad, I thought I'd sent out a follow-up email, I had not, so, I think we could just get rid of that sentence, because I think their concern is, is there, right?
Yep.
So we could get rid of the concern about transparency, which, rather than try to warcraft.
Yep, and then, you know, at the end of that, page four, two, Amy suggested cutting or reducing the verbiage of the third and fourth paragraphs. I think that's fine. I don't know where the "are overblown" came from and could be trimmed down, but that's sort of redundant. I would recommend striking "are overblown" and "could be trimmed down."
It's a paragraph period.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Oh, there we go.
The very last, it's like the last seven marks.
Yep.
Actually, I had a typo that I caught, it's on page four, third, lined up from the bottom, Amy asked for the D, sorry, I didn't see that before. So typo.
Yep.
Oh, asked, yep.
I found a few too. Yeah, and then wasn't, I don't know, didn't we decide that the Putney members being official was actually wrong? It wasn't that, they weren't official, were they? Is that still under question?
They feel they're officially representing, but they don't have an official subcommittee.
Okay.
That's the way they explained it to us.
Yes, that's how it was finally explained to me. So does that, is that, I'm sorry, where is that?
That's page four, one, two, three, four up.
Okay. But I think that's what, so that is the discussion that we had.
Reflexive discussion.
Reflexive discussion, so.
Yep. And then page five, there's also, I'm missing, transparency and accountability section, section spelled wrong and commented, needs any. And I don't understand, I don't think it would be clear to anyone reading the minutes under the endowment, likely legal and just should not be used to purchase something, you know, I don't, that the budget, you know. And I'm not trying to be a pain, I'm just thinking about how we're representing ourselves Republican for the record.
That's why we put a giant draft watermark in that version.
It's a good one.
Is that everything we had?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, on page three.
Page?
Yep, in the middle. Like right by the D and draft, Lyle, she had asked that school board members to take, not, the SBA would be WSSU?
Yep. Thank you, I was unclear.
The last sentence above finances, Jody asked to email the board members to be read by the, the what? Was that the, by the WSSU or the tech people or something?
I believe it was by the WSSU.
Okay.
But I will look and see.
Yeah, that was concerns about security.
Yeah, yeah, but it was about being read by somebody.
And might not be secure or something like that?
Yeah, it was something.
Maybe she just asked questions about the security.
Yeah.
Of the SU emails.
Yep.
That was the general gist, right?
Yep, that was the general gist. And then.
Is the minutes spelled wrong? I looked it up and I think it's right underneath that, the WSCSU emails. I think it's spelled wrong and has an extra E in it. It should be S U D P O N A E D, not E A E D. On page three.
Oh, okay.
Right, right, right beneath. Yep, see it?
Between the R and the A.
Okay, can you read that stuff between there? And under, the first sentence, under finances, amount is spelled wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Top of page four, is that she, health insurance has changed, she said health has changed. And then right above the D in draft, Jody, her name's spelled wrong. And at the end of that, you left off the rest of the sentence.
Yep.
And then technology spelled wrong.
Oh, yeah.
Turn the next sentence.
Thank you, I missed that one. I never see anything behind those.
None proposed in the next sentence.
I'll try to use that spell check.
It's on the right end.
It seems to want to interrupt my text every, every time.
I can see it's getting late. On page five.
Five.
At the top, educational equity, I guess the second sentence is, does that, is there any more to it or is that the end of it?
I don't know. I'll have to look.
That, that is the whole kind of thing of it. Because it had outcomes, there's an outcome.
Piece, okay, I wasn't sure if there was.
Outcome, outcome.
More or?
Piece is a good word, but I, if I thought about, if it wasn't 845, I could come up probably with a better word. Because we do talk about outcomes in equity, which.
Yep.
And not just program, programmatic equity.
Oh, outcomes in the appendix, is that what you were?
No, I think she was talking about, there's.
Well, the, we do talk, we talk about, in the AGS proposal, there's a discussion about SBC scores and outcomes and graduation rates and things like that, so that's what he, that's what is meant there. But it is in the appendix, so we can say that outcome piece in the appendix. Because that makes it work.
How about outcomes data?
Outcome data, thank you.
Data in the appendix?
Yeah, fine.
In the.
I think that's all I have. Any further discussion? And we ready to vote on the minutes, to approve the minutes as with the changes we have listed in great detail? All those in favor? And these extensions, the eyes have it. So I passed around a quick, I just slammed it together this afternoon because I realized we are not going to have a completed budget to have a views article on the budget right now, and so I've asked for an extension.
View, really?
Yeah, I asked for an extension, but I haven't heard, so hopefully we can get to the point next two days that we can put together something for the views that has budget in it, but just in case I don't get that.
They typically gave me until like a day or two after our official vote.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Yes, so.
Okay. So that would be great if we could wait until the, to the official vote and then I, we could.
I've just contacted Larry or.
Roger.
Linda or Roger and said, the vote is on the 23rd, we can't send you anything.
Okay, I was trying to, I sat down trying to write that, I was like, well, I don't even know what's going on, like, forget that, and so I thought, well, we should have something in there. So if you think I can probably get that, I can probably table this letter and this discussion, which I think would be a very popular move for my part at this hour, and that way we can maybe tackle this with the budget.
We could table it for 116 maybe?
The next meeting? Take a look at it?
For the work session?
Yes, that sounds good, and then. So I have on for 116 to discuss the budget and now to review the letter a little bit once we're kind, we should have some idea about the budget by 116 a little closer, so we could maybe start thinking about how that part of the letter is going to work. For the 23rd, we have our budget approval and public information meeting. I also am now going to have, Michael's going to just fill us in on the web, the WSCSU hosting our email addresses and we'll try to vote on that on the 23rd, one way or the other. Okay? And the pre-K discussion. Hopefully we'll have some numbers to put around that. Are there any other items for the January 23rd agenda or the 16th for that matter? We also have the meeting after that for the 13th, which is the BUHS annual meeting, so we could, we could reschedule that meeting or we could consider our meeting on the 16th being the rescheduling of the February 13th meeting. I mean, do we need to have a meeting on the 13th, I guess is what I'm asking, because that's the night of the BUHS meeting, so we traditionally do not have a meeting so that people can attend the BHS board meeting.
We typically rescheduled it for a different time, but we do need to do town meeting prep.
We have that for the 27th.
You do, okay. Is that enough time?
We're going to play by year at this point in time.
So maybe, all right, so let's keep the, I think, I like the idea of keeping it sort of, I mean, in play. Let's see how this, let's see how the 23rd goes, if we get everything done on the 16th and the 23rd is the approval and we can really be crisp.
So the 13th is a question mark.
Yes.
Okay.
Still, it remains a question mark.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that on people's radar. Oh, and so for town meeting, also, it would, I think it would be helpful to have a discussion about the AGS at town meeting and I would like to consider potential of putting a vote in front of the town, just it's an advisory vote, doesn't count for anything, but that we have that formal process around it, but we would have to get that into, Lori, I think it's 40 days before town meeting, so maybe I should put that on the agenda for the 16th as well.
Mm-hmm.
All right, if you have anything to last, any, I will send the 16th, I have to get that to Barb pretty quickly so that it gets warned, but if you have any additions for the 16th, if you could let me know the next day or two, and if you add additions for the 23rd, if you could let me know by mid next week, anything you'd like to have added to the agenda, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
I'll see you.
Thank you.
Any executive sessions needed?
We did skip over one thing, that's communication.
Oh, I'm sorry, because we skipped over the minutes and so I just skipped over the clerk's report.
So I do have one communication.
Thank you.
I will be resigning effective town meeting day.
Okay. Oh, that's your communication to us?
Yes. I think there's a lot of things I could say, but I'm going to take the high road and say I have enjoyed working on the board for the last 13 years. I really wanted to fulfill my obligation to the study committee for the last two and that this past year has been, caused me to reflect on how I want to spend my time and I want to do it in meaningful ways and I don't feel like I'm doing that with this board, so. So you'll probably have to let Lori know.
That there's another opening.
There's an opening.
Yep.
Thank you for your search, Tammy.
Thank you. And so I have the views article communication that I have, and also I had a communication from Rachel Glickman about the food program and we have it on the 24th to discuss the snack program kind of alongside that, so, and just keeping that in the local.
24th of?
Oh, sorry, the 24th of April that we're, that we discussed local foods and things like that, so that's probably, I think that was our intention to put on, like, you know, that maybe there would be a subcommittee, there'd be a separate committee that would take over that because we've got a lot, we're already, we're already meeting a lot and dealing with a lot of stuff, so I think if there's an interested, invested group that wants to work on that, that might be a better way to have that happen.
All around.
Yes.
Because I'm not sure that it got picked up at that meeting when Paul said that Dummerston presents a very different scenario than the other schools, the cost of what it would cost to.
Mm-hmm.
Versus, you know, what Academy, for example, puts into this program versus what we have available to us. I'm not sure that got recognized as a piece of why this hasn't sort of moved.
Right.
And then if you have a subcommittee looking at it, which I think is the wise thing to do, at some point you need to make a decision on.
What goes.
What money are we going to look at in terms of coming to the $113,000 cut?
You know, in my mind, having a, excuse me, fully functioning fire panel that we can repair is more meaningful to me than having a farm school program. You know, I don't know if it's that same amount of money, you know, and I think we do things as a school and as a community like we did years ago where, you know, on our own.
Where we grow things and eat things?
Where we grow things, eat things, we bring in the local farmers like we did, you know, like we used to. You know, there's a lot of really interesting opportunities to enrich our programming. And do the snack program that we're going to start hopefully next week.
So, oh, great.
So I think that's a helpful piece and some of the things that we can do for small money and I think if it's a subcommittee, that's why I'm saying I don't think the board should be doing this, I don't think there is a lot, I think we all know there's not a lot of money for supporting this, but if you have a committee of people that are committed to it and who knows what they can do and I surely don't want to stop interest in trying to improve things, I just don't think we all have the bandwidth for it, so I will happily support that, that initiative and so I think that might be, as you say, all around, a great way to go.
Right.
So there is no executive session required?
I had one communication, I'm sorry, I got a communication from Dan Normando about school closure on Friday, just saying essentially the idea of it being, coming down from the WSCSU to the, to the schools, it seems like, and maybe it should be a board-driven decision. I'm just giving you.
I don't.
And questioning why there was a, what, maybe they've already hashed that out a little bit, but.
I know.
Just, that was the communication, that was, that was the communication that I'd received, that's all.
I think probably you should have a discussion with the superintendent about her decision-making process for.
That's where it comes from.
Yeah, no, I understand that, you know, I think that was the.
Town roads and the bus.
Perhaps some frustration felt by what seemed like a beautiful day.
At minus 20 some odd degrees?
Yeah, that, that was sun, that was Saturday.
I can guarantee it's never good.
It's nice looking out the windows.
Right, on all levels.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just passing along the communication, it's my duties.
Yes, so we won't kill the messenger.
But please send back Dan then, I have no control.
Yeah.
I mean, I just.
I get it.
Yep. And it happened, Dummerston has had a track, former superintendent down.
Well, you're going to get tracked down on, on either side of that issue.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a winner, it's not a winner, winner issue, so, and, so.
Plenty of comments here on social media.
Was there?
Yes.
Another reason why I don't read social media. But I, you know, it is hard for, for families that don't see a snowstorm in the forecast and then have to set, I mean, I do think we have to recognize that it's, you know, it's hard to have kids, so that sometimes that's a frustration for people when you suddenly like, oh, I did, there was nothing on the forecast, so I didn't even think to implement Plan B, C, D, E, which I know you need to have as a parent, especially with young children, but, so I, you know, just in terms of.
It was supposed to be the coldest day of that week. It was scheduled 17 below, when I got up, it was 10 degrees.
Oh, that's not, that didn't work out the way we thought.
It's because they moved it back.
And then the phone rang, it's like, ooh.
It's the wind chill.
Right.
Right.
I know, so.
And the fact that we had kids waiting at bus stops in Dummerston for probably longer than in Rattabro. I can tell you historically, the goal has always been to have school open because some, for the most part, many kids, it's the only place where they eat. So closing for the day is always weighed against, some kids may go without food.
On that note.
I move for adjourn.
Thank you, Amy, second. Those in favor? I adjournment at eight.
Eight.
Eight, eight for adjournment. Thank you very much, Tori, thank you, BCTV.